For our bi-monthly meeting, and would everyone please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have no announcements. Other than hopefully everyone's having a wonderful summer. Hasn't been too too hot in here midday, which is nice, and not a whole lot of rain, which is also nice. First scheduled speaker tonight is Mr. Bob Ferrari, the engineer for Northeast Water Solutions, regarding the MES water update with two proposals.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Bob.
Good to see you all again. Let me start just with, please indulge me, I managed to acquire some sort of illness last week and I lost my voice and I didn't say, I don't think I said more than twenty words over the weekend and so we'll see how it goes tonight. So I'm a little off with my voice, but otherwise I'm functional. So just indulge me a little bit and do the best we can. The quick update is, system's been running well consistently. Ancient history, you know, we did the refurbishment back in February. It's been running beautifully, water quality's been excellent. We had one of mine up lip on iron, but we know why, and it was nothing of any significance. But other than that, it's been running extremely well, there's been no issues with compliance. All testing, all parameters is in compliance and as I said, it's been running well. We've been routinely coming up here twice a week. I've gotten several of my other operators cross-trained on the system. So, for example, Glenn will be on vacation for a couple of days. The end of this week, maybe next week, but we have other folks who can cover him, including myself. So that's good. Back in, I believe, hell, I think it was late April, we had a conference call with Mass D E P. Just to review everything, review all the analytical work, we had submitted comprehensive evaluation report. They were quite pleased. They accepted the, they concurred that the system was operating correctly. There was no outstanding negative issues. The questions had been answered, they were satisfied that the problems had been resolved. And as far as they were concerned, the school could go back on the supply for the public water system and go off bottled water. We did have a discussion at the time, and Helen and I were, you know, Helen was involved in the discussion, that we were looking to do the remote monitoring system. At least the town, the selectmen wanted to consider it. And a final decision, once a final decision was made on that, then a decision would be made on going back on. Since we were so close to the summer anyway at that point, you know, the school being out for the summer and on reduced use and demand. So that's the status update, you know, we've been doing ongoing monitoring. We've actually been monitoring a little more than we're required to because we periodically will do some, a few extra parameters just to satisfy ourselves. It's more as a quality control check, and there's been absolutely no problems whatsoever. All the maintenance is done on the system, all the routine maintenance. And as far as the annual maintenance, we only have two items outstanding. One is the annual relamping of the UV sterilizer. And the other one is to do the internal inspection of the water storage tank. What we're doing is Glenn is slowly working the level of tank down. Because obviously, to do the inspection properly, you want the tank to be, you know, as close to empty as possible. But I don't want to waste the water by dumping it out into the storm drain, so we're just, in fact, he was here today and he dropped the control elevation again like another couple of thousand gallons, so we're just gonna take it down. And probably the latter part of next week, we'll do the internal inspection. We don't anticipate finding any problems, but, you know, if anything, maybe my anticipation is there might be a little bit of material to clean out of the tank, but that's easy to do. And then we have time to, you know, if we have to do some cleaning, do that. Get the tank refilled, sanitize it, whatever, and get the analytical work done. And we're back online again well before school starts. And we'll also get the, we've already ordered the components, we actually have them for the relamping of the UV. It's a routine maintenance item, we'll take care of that. One thing to point out is, in our contract, we actually have a separate line item for doing what we call the periodic and annual maintenance. What's actually happening with that is Glenn tends to fit it in. He doesn't try to do all the annual maintenance in one shot. And what tends to happen is, on his different visits up here, he'll rebuild a pump, or he'll do some other, you know, the metering pump, or he'll do something else that's part of the annual maintenance. And so, you know, it might add fifteen minutes to a routine site visit, or maybe even add nothing to it. So, but it's an efficient way to get it done. Because frankly, the biggest time waster and budget burner is driving up here. You know, if he has to make a trip, or any of us have to, from our office up to here, you know, we're blowing, you know, forty-five minutes to an hour, depending on traffic, getting here. But alternatively, because we operate, for example, the North Smithfield Schools, we operate Killianley, we operate several systems in Millville, we're doing a lot of work in Pasco, so we're often in the neighborhood anyway. So, we try to be as efficient as possible at the time. So what you may find out is that that line item in our budget is underloaded because in many cases, we're doing that preventive maintenance just as part of our routine contract operations visit, you know, during our normal weekly visits. And we're trying to be as efficient as possible in that. Like I said, he was up today, Glenn came up here, and we talked about it, he dropped the control elevation tanks. We're slowly bringing the tank down, just with your normal water usage in here. While we still want to keep water flushing through the system though, you know, we don't want to have a long dwell time. So that's the status report. Things are going fine, no water quality issues whatsoever. We have submitted two proposals to the town. And I sincerely apologize to the town and to the board here. You should have had these months ago. The reason you don't is principally because, well, they're interconnected. One is for implementing the remote monitoring system. And the other one was then if we implement the remote monitoring system, we can modify our contract operations work. And take it down to one day a week on-site, which is a significant reduction in your annual cost for that contract. So what is before the town right now is basically a capital proposal for the remote monitoring system, and then a revised operating contract. And it is a three-year contract, and there's a couple of reasons why, which I'll get to. But the reason I'm apologizing is because our delay here, and I'm not trying to pass the buck, was, I think I might have mentioned this to the board before, we were, the panel was built by a particular contractor, and they did a very good job on the panel when we upgraded the system in 2010. When we're normally doing this, remote monitoring, where we have to go into the PLC panel. We want to work with the same panel builder and the same, you know, entity that built it, for a lot of, for all the right reasons. We went back and forth for four months and literally never got an actual final, never got even a preliminary, let alone a final code from them to get the work done. And we talked to them, we laid out the scope of work, you know, asked them for, you know, just tell us what you want to do it, blah, blah, blah. We actually never got a code. And we, for four months, Mel and Glenn and myself, you know, just kept trying, and we finally threw up our hands. And we had a couple of alternative means to accomplish what we wanted to accomplish. Which is basically, you've got to pull signals from the system. You have some existing instrumentation there that already generates signals, like I went to that panel. And we also were adding two new instruments in there, which would generate new signals. So what we're actually doing is building a parallel box, basically. Accept signals in and then send them out remotely, send them out via an internet connection. Which could be either via, like say, a cable provider or via a telephone company. That we can get both in our office, and for that matter, we can actually send them to a workstation here, for example. Once we have them remotely, they can go to more than one location. We just advise that we make it a secure location, you don't want to have it out there that anybody could just, you know, tap into it. But having said that, that delayed a lot of time unfortunately on our part to get the proposal to you. Also, it did increase the cost, from what we projected, and I also apologize for that. The other issue was, we had basically two sources to go to for a chlorine residual analyzer. And as Helen's aware, and I think I may have mentioned it aboard, they're not inexpensive. We work with two manufacturers in this smaller scale system, and they're very good, they make very good components. So there's that new component in there. And we had to work through a few things to make sure we get it implemented properly in the right location, which we can. In any event, so we have the capital proposal and that would include the two new instruments, which is the residual analyzer and one level monitor for one of the chemical day tanks, the hypochlorite storage tank, because we want to monitor that level. Because that's the most critical parameter now, is if we're running out of our chlorine chemical, we want to know about it real quick. This system would monitor you, we'd be pulling signals twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, we're just monitoring continuously. We would get the signals in our office. The signals would be data logged, okay? It goes into our service system, it gets data logged, we have backup on everything. We also take certain signals and blow them into the state reporting forms. So it's happening automatically on a daily basis, which makes the administrative piece very easy. We get automatic alert and alarm notification. And at that point, we can determine if we have to respond, you know, immediately or not. If it's a non-critical alarm and it's, you know, Sunday afternoon, we may wait till it come over till Monday morning or something like that, as opposed to, you know, racing over here, you know, Sunday night when we don't really have to, as if it's a non-critical alarm. But we get that also, and we set it up with alert levels and alarm levels. For example, we'd probably set up where, when the chemical storage tank was down two-thirds, we'd get an alert to say, "Next visit, you better replenish if you have it." And then we get an alarm level, say when it gets down to like, you know, twenty percent full or something like that. So that's like, we gotta get out there right now and replenish it. So we have that in there. As I said, we would get the signals in our office. Also, we get them remotely on our own laptops. We just, all we do is tap in. We get the alerts and alarms on our PDAs. Like on my droid, Glenn gets it on his. We get email alerts, text alerts, we get it everywhere you can get one. We can set it up that, for example, you could have a station here at Town Hall where you can tap into it. We give you, here's the, you're an address, all you've got to do is go in, here's the security code, and you've got the screen right there in front of you. We have some clients who actually like doing that, you know, and some who just don't even want to know about it. I recommend that we, you have at least one station set up here, just because it'd be a good thing to have, I think, in my opinion. In any event, to get to the, you know, the number piece of it, the quote, and I tried to make this as skinny as I could, I sincerely mean that, sixteen thousand nine thirty-two, which is, it is higher than I, I originally gave Helen, when she asked for budgeting purposes, I said budget ten to twelve. The issues with the panel, frankly, it probably added three or four thousand dollars to that cost, I can tell you that right now. And the residual analyzer, just what it's worth, is about a, it's in this proposal, about thirty-five hundred dollars. Okay, normally we'd probably go, it'd be retail higher, but we're keeping it at that. But it is more than we anticipated, we originally budgeted the project. There's not much I can do about that right now. That's all the equipment, all the installation, programming, setup, startup, validation, all the screen configuration, you know, soup to nuts in there. The only thing that's not in that is, we would need an internet connection at the school. Okay, now I assume the school has an internet, I mean, I know they do. So the equation is, we just have to get either, you know, if there's one in Greenie's office, we'll just, we can just put an extension on it and grab it. Or something like that, but we just need to have a connection.
And that panel is a one-time shot, right?
Oh, absolutely. It's a one-shot deal. The other companion piece here is the revised operating contract. This is set as a three-year contract, and effectively what it does is, we're not quite cutting the certified operator, the cost for the baseline services is getting cut significantly, okay? The operator visits, it's probably going down by about seven thousand a year. So realistically, when we factor back in the operating cost, the service fees for the remote monitoring, it's about, that's a hundred and fifty dollars a month for that twenty-four seven service. Round numbers, I'm saying you're looking at approximately a three-year payback on this, okay? This is such a three-year contract, okay? What I really like about it is that it gives everybody a hundred percent operating security on the system. Okay, we're gonna know twenty-four seven what's going on. I could be anywhere on the planet, I can tap into this, as long as I can get to the internet, by whatever means, I can tap in.
Just as a backup, you need a dedicated internet in line?
Yeah, you want to have a dedicated internet in line, which enables us to, we can get in anytime we want, and we get the signals continuously. So as long as there's an active, as long as they have an internet connection at service at the school.
Can it be wireless, or need to be wired?
You could go wireless, the problem is going to be, if you go wireless, typically, A, you need line of sight, and you have some, you know, distance limitations on that. And so we assumed here it'd be a hard-wired connection. We've done this with, you know, Cox Cable, we've done it with Comcast, we've done it with Verizon, you know, anybody, any carrier who provides internet capability. I mean, the school has internet service in the school. So it would just, it'd just be one more connection on that system, is all it'd be. You don't have to change providers or anything like that. I'm not, I don't know if there's a cost impact to the school, if they have one more connection on there or not. I'm not sure how many connections they have, but, you know, that might need to be looked into, unless you can just kind of answer to that.
Yeah, I'd say maybe fifty bucks a month.
I don't think it'd be that much, not for the school. I mean, if you didn't have service at all, you might see fifty or sixty bucks a month.
Somebody might have to run the Cat Five from wherever the internet comes from, the school, to wherever.
Yeah, I mean, if we can be shown a connection, we can run Cat Five. You know, we've done that, we did our whole office, so, we just need a connection.
Right.
You know.
Whereas the same way as our energy management, that we install.
Yeah.
Same idea. We can access it from any hotel or whatever, as long as I got an internet and a password. I can watch any of our buildings.
So, in any event, usually it's fairly straightforward, we can pretty, from a programming standpoint, we can pretty much deal with it. We've never had a system we couldn't deal with, I'll put it that way. We don't believe there's any major issues, other than just making sure that we get set up properly through the system's internet system and through their service provider, okay? But we've worked with almost everybody in the business, so it hasn't been a problem so far.
So, now, we just got to figure out if the school has an available port, and Bob and Kurt can run that line, that's responsible.
Yeah, I mean, running Cat Five isn't that big a deal.
Okay.
Beyond that, you know, there's no break-in. There actually is one good aspect to providing this parallel panel next to the existing control panel is, basically, it takes, we're down at maybe fifteen minutes of downtime on the existing panel, the system. If we had to go into the existing panel, one of our dilemmas was that you get, pretty much get one shot to get it done right, otherwise, if you screw up, you might be down for a while, which is not a good thing for the school. Even the summer. And so, by doing this, we can get everything in there, loaded, programmed, and all we're doing is then just picking up signal connections from terminal strips in one panel to the adjacent panel. We can do that with a panel being live, so it's not a problem, there's never really no downtime at all in the existing panel. And there shouldn't be any other disruption or downtime to the school, other than, actually, there isn't any, I'm trying to think. No, there's not at all, because the two instruments we're putting in there would be done, one has zero impact on the school, and the other one, we have to have the system, the front end of the system down, but not the back end. You know, we're taking something down for an hour or two before the storage tank. But you've got work, the storage tank, and your distribution pumps are operating, so there's no downtime at all. So, in that respect, it's good. Beyond that, like I said, it's a, we're going with a three-year operating contract. It fills out the payback for you. And so far, we've been under the budget and staying under budget, and that's our intent, to keep it that way. It's, obviously, it's your decision, and whichever way you want to go, I mean, if you want to stay, you say, "Well, listen, we're not ready to do that right now." We'll just keep operating, we've been operating. But if you want to go ahead with it, we're prepared to move forward, you know, immediately. Because, you know, we would want to get it done as quickly as possible, obviously, and get online. The state's, you know, the state's acceptance of the system is not dependent on the remote monitoring system. That's just another nice augmentation of the monitoring oversight of the system, okay? But obviously, you know, it provides a very substantial comfort level to everyone. Because you're going from a system being monitored really a couple of days a week when we're in here. You know, I'm not denigrating Greenie, I'm just saying, you know, we've been given that responsibility, but we're here a couple of days a week. And now it's twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, okay? And we're monitoring, you know, end to end, we're monitoring the system, so if something goes wrong, we're gonna know about it real quick.
Right, and that information could be shared with the state or something.
Well, that's the whole intent. We actually create customized, the state has certain reporting forms. We actually take those forms, load it, we just program them in, the data goes into, like the pH data, or the residual data. This goes right into the forms, and we just put algorithms in there. So frankly, the people who are doing our compliance administration look a real hat, they love it. Because they're just checking the form, as opposed to, you know, word processing the form, which is a pain in the butt. It takes, by the way, you know, the clerical glitches, you know, go down by ninety-nine percent. Not that there's all that many, but, you know, nobody's perfect. And occasionally you transpose a number or something like that. So, it just gets very automated, and it makes life a lot easier, so. They're out there for your consideration, and obviously, you know, if any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
This come from MES Board?
Yes. And there are limited funds left in that account, but certainly sufficient to cover this. I would like to see the board move forward with this, I think this is something we really need to do. And I would hate to postpone it, in fear that those funds will be there when we need them, so.
Will this have to be a special time meeting?
No.
Then I'll make the motion to support the installation of the remote monitoring system.
And we're doing this reusing as well, Mel?
There would be separate votes, as reassurance to the board, and Bob and I did not talk about this. I did do the math in comparison to the current contract, and he's exactly right, it's about a three-year payback, so.
And what is that? Megan, second, because then it's discussion. What's our current operating budget for that line item?
Approximately thirty thousand.
Thirty. All right.
Second. And you need one signature?
Yes, and this would be to authorize a chairman to sign on behalf of the board.
I mean, my motion is such.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And that's for the monitoring system, did you also want to vote on the operations contract?
I'd like to entertain.
You're gonna make the motion?
I'm gonna make the motion. My operation contract.
Three years.
Three years, sorry.
I'll second.
And that's all set to have just one signature. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much, Bob. And I'll go get better.
Okay, next we have approval of minutes and warrants. We have minutes from July seventh, two thousand fourteen, at seven PM.
Can't do that now.
Huh? He's the only one that. To table that one again. That's gonna be in next year. We'll have an anniversary for. All right, so we'll have to table this to, yeah, July seventh minutes, Alan? We're gonna have to table that to the first September. Because Jennifer's gonna be out next meeting, and she's one of the only three that was here. So the next one will be July twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, at six PM.
Motion to approve the minutes of July twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, meeting at six PM.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm standing.
Okay. Next, we have nothing, what, July seventh?
July seventh.
July twenty-first, first, at seven PM.
I'm hoping we'll prove the minutes of July twenty-first at seven PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have any warrants tonight?
No warrants.
Reports of town officials, we have none tonight, first public forum?
Mr. Chairman, Board, and Board. I'm not here to give bad news. My name's Ron Benoit, I'm from Plainfield, Connecticut, and I was born and raised in Millville. And the reason I'm here is, back when I was in the fourth grade at this school, my fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Hughes, had all of us bury a time capsule in the front of the building. We were supposed to reopen that time capsule twenty-five years later, as you can see, that was thirty-four years ago. I'm forty-four years old this year, so it's quite a while. What I'm looking to do is, I'm looking to make that proposal, to get that time capsule undug and lifted up and opened up, with hoping the top people that were in the fourth grade class, who are still around and available to, you know, be a part of that as well. I want to see it, I mean, your brother was in my class, so I'm assuming he's probably involved in it as well. I would like to have the opportunity to maybe look at, I know it's right here in the front of the building. I have a pretty idea, it's on the right side of the building that I can remember, I mean, I can remember pretty good, thirty-four years ago. But when I got a freshman going, a daughter going into freshman, and I got a son in college, they're pretty amazed that I can remember thirty-four years later that there's a time capsule buried here. And I would like the opportunity to explore the option of getting it unburied and opening it up, even if we have to do it as a special during a centennial, or however we can do it, I'd like the opportunity to proceed that.
I think you're right. I don't, I mean, do we have to go to the historical? Is that, is the grounds part of the?
Yeah. I mean, I think if we're just unearthing it, then we're gonna make sure that the grounds is put back. You're saying it's in a grass area, correct, and the symbol?
I'm assuming it's, my memory is, it's on the overhead, the step up.
Okay.
On the right side, if you're looking at the building, it's to the left, if you're looking outside, the building is to the right, that I can remember. I thought we planned to something in the ground and make it so we knew where it was. But it's probably been taken down.
Mowed over, and who knows?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if even Mrs. Hughes is alive anymore.
She is.
She is. Is she able to?
I'm sure, you know what, I see her occasionally, sometimes, but I do see Mrs. Pillibosh and Mrs. Murphy quite often. So I'm sure they might have some contact.
So my wife must have been in your class.
Who's your wife?
Claudia Pullman. She's forty-four.
She might be, uh what year did she grad- what year did she gra- I graduated in eighty-eight.
I don't believe I've said that.
I say I'm forty. I'm forty-four in August, so I mean, I was in class of eighty-eight, so. She, her name rings a bell, but um.
Charlie Pullman's sister.
Oh, okay. Alright, so I mean, again, I'm not here to anything bad. It's I just, it's came up and with the social media that's out there today. I was able to connect with some of these people and a lot of them do remember stuff they put in it. Uh my mother passed away five, six years ago this year and I'm just curious if there was something in there that my mother had given me to put in there. Um I know there are other people, your your mother and father passed on and there might be something John had put in there. Um I just think it would be great, an opportunity now whether we do it during a centennial and get some.
You don't wanna wait two years.
Is it that many years? Oh, okay. I wanna do it before the frost. And I'm hoping it's it's not too far down. If it's below four feet, then I'm wondering if if it's below four feet, then maybe the frost didn't hit it.
If you're gonna you're gonna have a centennial event this?
September.
In September?
This year?
Mm-hmm, a day in the park, yeah. But I mean, i- if you can coordinate something, I mean, that's fine, but I mean, I think it's, you know, um I don't think that's dependent upon it. It's nice, you know, but I don't know who's working on it and sometimes the availability of who's ever helping, I mean, cause you're saying it's up on top.
I'm ho- I'm thinking it's it's it ain't gonna be below the the cement wall. I think it's within that.
Yeah.
That step up.
It's gonna be manual labor.
Yeah, it's gonna be manual labor. So I'm hoping I get volunteers to kinda help me, you know, some of these people's husbands and stuff to come and.
Where's the structure? Is it concrete, cement?
Yeah, you know where the um the round cement steeple thing is here in the front? It's on that platform. I'm pretty sure. If I if I dig for three days and find nothing, I'll be pretty upset. But I'm pretty sure, I don't think we've ever, you guys have never done nothing to that, right? Has that always been there?
Yeah.
That's always been there. I mean, it just looks so much smaller when you're bigger.
Or when you're standing on the wall in trouble. Um there was brush bushes, like hedges around it. That's the only thing.
But in the front though, right?
In the sides.
Yeah.
In the front, there was hedges.
Yeah, I mean, if I could love to get ahold of Mrs. Hughes if she's.
What was it, a glass jar? My my think my daughter had her in school.
That's that's um. That's one I don't remember if it was a glass jar. I mean.
If, cause if it had a metal cover, you could get a metal detector.
That's what I'm thinking I'll do first. Put a metal detector, if it buzzes, then I know there's metal there. And it'll give me an idea of where it is and, like I said, thirty-four years, I can imagine what's in there. I really can imagine what's in there.
That'd be interesting.
It would be. I mean, I mean, this is, I mean, this is my town. I grew up here. I still have a lot of sediment buried in this town and and that's one thing that's left in this town that I would like to see, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my only concern would be replacing the grass.
Yeah, we just need an agreement that the the grass would be replaced, it's, you know.
That the will the.
Replanted.
The land be returned to.
Yeah.
It what it was prior to digging. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Especially where we are at the end of the season, it would have the whole winter to.
Yeah, so you lift the saw and peel the saw back and dig.
Yeah, I mean, luckily it's not that big of an area. It's only probably.
Probably could've set it.
Probably six by eight, ten feet tops, I mean, so I appreciate your time and.
Well, um the only thing in our packets this evening is um that they want to do some work out there.
Yep.
With the eighteen fifty stone and the king stone. So I'm thinking maybe we can try to coordinate it. There's no date on this one. You know, especially if they're doing something where I don't wanna have they they found some cornerstone that they're gonna be placing out at the front of the the same area. So that's why I wanna make sure that, I don't have a problem with it coming out, as long as it's returned to what it is right now, I'm good. Um I just wanna make sure that, you might wanna check with the with them. Do you see a date on here?
No.
That says when they wanna do this?
No, I'm going to suggest that the um with respect to that letter, the selectmen asked the historical commission to perhaps hold off on any work until we get that report from the engineers, just not knowing what work may need to be done. I'd hate to see them put money into it and then.
It's lucky we have a traveling Mister President tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm just. Yeah, we asked an agreement that no future plantings of flowers or shrubs will be not planted.
Yep.
Um. So, yeah, I don't, I think we might just need to coordinate a little. Just make sure we don't step on any toes. And then maybe we can just get in, you know, him in a letter form that you agree to return it back to the state in which you found it and and go from there.
That's right.
And if I could have you just um provide your name and address and contact information, that'd be great. How long was the the drive here from Plainfield?
About fifty minutes. Now there's a blackstone, so we had to.
This is Mrs. Hughes' first name and I think I've seen her on Facebook.
She's gotta be.
I I'm pretty sure, I remember seeing pictures of her. I don't know if she's moved or not, but cause she used to live in Lincoln or Cumberland, but um I have seen her.
Yeah, I know Ms. Gilman has passed on.
Yes, she does, please. But um I know she was on Facebook, but that's her first name.
Alright, great. Thank you very much.
You'll find her through there.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So we'll discuss the monuments on on the uh on the eighteenth then?
September or August. I don't know if I'll have the report.
Alright, all.
As soon as I have the report.
Yeah, once we have the report, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Alright, good. Okay. Um. I guess that's it for corresponding thing. Um. Anybody have anything else? Alright, appointments, resignations, we have nothing. Um executive secretary's report?
Yep, um just to, actually, it's a follow-up to the letter of July thirtieth that you received from um the building commissioner, Mr. Emity, who also serves as the earth removal agent in town.
Yeah, I saw that.
Um I just learned today that uh he's gonna be going to the site Wednesday evening.
Okay.
To meet with the gentleman.
Is he being cooperative?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Um but there's been a stop work order issued uh on the earth removal at that site. And my understanding is in order to continue working, he would have to file an appeal with the board.
Okay.
Um so Mr. Emity is going to enforce the fact that he does need to apply or reapply for a permit. Because it's, the work's been ongoing for so long with no evidence of any agricultural business there, so. So yeah, I just wanted to point that out. Um the planning board um emailed asking if the selectmen would be interested in meeting jointly on September fifteenth. They are gonna hold a public hearing regarding the zoning changes uh that were discussed at the last meeting. Um that is a meeting night um for the selectmen at seven o'clock, so they said they could do it in here at six or six-thirty. They'd like to televise it and have it videoed. Um otherwise, um if you didn't wanna come in early, you know, they would just go ahead and do it and be out here by seven. So I don't know if that's something you want to meet a post as a meeting or.
I think at the last minute, they had asked for it to be a joint effort.
Yeah.
For, you know, to, so I don't have a problem. I can be here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so the fifteenth, uh Monday, the fifteenth at six o'clock, oh that down?
Yep. That's September?
Correct.
I think I might have issued that. I'm gonna submit it.
Okay, I think we, I've got three anyway, so.
Yep. Okay.
Um and just for the board's information, the um the three vehicles um have sold. They sold on the electronic website, Unisabid. Um the nineteen ninety-five Explorer went for four hundred seventy, the two thousand two pickup was nine hundred twenty-six. And the Crown Victoria went for five hundred twenty-five. And six bikes that were actually lost and found went for sixty dollars. So those have all been paid for and are gone.
Good.
And that's it, that's all I have.
Excellent. Um old business, nothing. New business, um motion to uh call for a special town meeting. Uh to be held on Monday, November seventeenth at six thirty P M at the Millville Elementary School. And to open the warrant effective immediately with the intent to close the warrant at the board's regular meeting to be held on Monday, October sixth. So I'm looking for a motion as a as I just read.
Sure moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is legal requests from the conservation commission. Let's see, attached in, um I don't know if everybody read it or. It's about three sixty-four Chestnut Hill Road. Um the abbot at the hearing requested that the hearing be closed and a decision be rendered since the applicant did not have a stamped certified plan. Anyway, so with all this business, they're looking for legal advice.
I would make the motion to approve legal advice.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Um last, a new business is a transportation bid. We have we had um three different bids. We had uh Tellstone, uh Tellstone's bid for last year comparing to this year's. And then we have travelers' bid. If you do the math, Tellstone is re- is three hundred dollars a day. Travelers' uh transportation is proposing one hundred and eighty dollars a day for all Norfolk, Aggie and Tri County. So a hundred and twenty dollars a day savings times a hundred and eighty days is is gonna equal roughly twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars savings if we go through travelers. Um the difference is gonna be travelers will be taking, uh instead of doing separate buses for Tri County and for Norfolk. Uh it'll be basically one bus uh for both uh districts. Um both out of our, both of the outer district schools. And um so the children will be on the bus a little bit longer, but at with the twenty-one thousand dollar savings, that's big. So.
Alright, if we know about travelers, I mean.
Oh, they're big, they're massive companies, so, yeah.
I make the motion to approve the travelers' bid.
Okay.
A second, I have a question though. Um Helen, you said there was some question in regards to how they were gonna swing that and what they were gonna do and did they get back to you on that?
I did meet with Mister Legary earlier this afternoon. Um one of the issues is Tri County doesn't let um students be dropped off any earlier than seven fifteen. And the way the timing works, he would have to actually, with the Tri County and Norfolk kids on the bus, he would have to go all the way to Walpole first and then come back. My concern was having those Tri County kids have to sit through that ride and all the way back, so. Um he's willing to work with us and ensure that the kids get the shortest ride possible, you know, and and do it most effectively.
In Tri County, we have three?
We have three now. We just learned of the third one today. So I am, it was too late today, but I am gonna put a call into them tomorrow. Um to see if they'll let the kids be dropped off earlier.
And Aggie has how many?
Two.
Two.
Um the worst case scenario, the the um projected or proposed route that he gave me, what he did was he started with the pickup of the Tri County kids. So that would really give them a really long ride just by switching the route so that he picks up the Norfolk kids first. Reduced um the other ro- you know, kids ride by ten, ten minutes, so they'll probably be on the bus for about an hour and five, hour and ten minutes. But I mean, I do know some B V T kids who were were on the bus for an hour and.
Yeah, mine were.
You know, yeah, and I know he did tell me he actually had this run many years ago. Um he picked up kids at the Oxbridge Courthouse and went through Milford and other towns. And he said some of the kids were on the bus up to one hour and twenty minutes, so it's not unheard of.
So he picks up at the houses? We don't have.
He will pick up at the houses.
We don't have one stop.
Coincidentally, the students all live within thirty seconds of each other, so.
No, cause I know some towns, you have one stop.
Right, and that's how Norfolk used to be. The two students would go to the one stop, but these two students actually live right near each other, so it's not any more time to just pick them up at their homes.
No, cause I was on one, I think it was Tri Com- or Norfolk, no, Tri County, and they had their bus routes and those kids, some of those kids are on that bus for like an hour and a half. You know, and that's why I was like, well, I know with young kids and there is this uh guideline of one hour that you're not supposed to be on.
Right, and for special needs students as well. I did make sure that there was no law with the time mandate and make sure neither was it. Um I did speak to the um one of the parents of the um the Tri County students, um one of the children that has been attending for the past couple of years. Just to see the time should be picked up in the past and she's probably gonna have to get picked up about a half hour earlier. Um he said, you know, it's doable. The thing is, for a twenty thousand dollars savings, it's hard to say no.
Yep.
No, and I and I think not only the transportation, but the tuition too that we pay. I mean, we have to save every little bit, so we're all doing our part, so that half hour will be their part, so.
Yep.
Unfortunately, m- maybe they can use that time wisely.
It's just so interesting that if you send your kid to Oxbridge or Milford or Hope Dale.
Mm-hmm.
We don't pay the transportation. The parents have to get them there.
Well, school choice is different from.
Yeah, it shouldn't be. That's still school choice.
No, I don't. I mean, it's a conversation we've all had, yeah.
It's still the school choice, alright, whatever. That's being worked on up at the state level, but. Okay.
There's been a motion and a second to approve.
All of, all, any more discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh that's it. Next, we have members forum, nothing posted tonight. Final public forum. We've most time, we've been uh dropped. Nobody wanted to stay. Sit with us. Um so our next regular meeting will be Monday, August eighteenth at uh seven P M right here. And we're gonna do signatures right now and no executive session tonight and then we will be adjourned.
Yes, four would be just for you and then these are for all of us.
That's the same.
That's the the legal request.
No, I'm saying all the same.
You gotta sign, eh?
Oh, yeah.
It's not that easy.
It's a guarantee.
Well, that's in September, actually. Puerto Rico tomorrow. That's all you can do. When's your vacation or are you two weeks out?
We don't talk about that.
Two weeks.
We do not talk about school beginning. We do not talk about returning to work. Stop right there. Um twenty-fifth, we stop bef- well, the problem is, is we stop before Labor Day. B M R doesn't stop till the. Um, twenty-fifth, we start bef- well, the problem is, is we start before Labor Day. B M R doesn't start till the Friday after, so if two weeks that my kids are feeling like, oh, that I have to like
Yep.
get a sitter and everything, so.
Anyone out there, chief? Moshe Noach.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.